Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Keahan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Crowe-Cramer.
Here.
Alderman Spencer has been excused.
First off, I'd like to welcome Attorney Gillespie to the meeting this evening. He's filling in for Pam Captain from the City of Nina. And following that, the first item on the agenda is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you would like to address the council this evening and make a comment, you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, and we would like to listen to your comments. Except, we didn't turn the microphone on. Okay. I know at least a few of you would like to comment this evening, so...
Sure. My name is Larry Redine. I live at 393 Willow Lane in Manassas. I'd like to address the council, and the area that I'm concerned about is we have nuisance going on in the lagoon area, off in Willow Lane and Lake Road. We never had this problem for the 30 years that I've lived down there. Last two years fishermen have come in. I don't know what they get at 11, 12 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, running lights and generators. I would have thought that our police department, our civil servants could take care of this. I'm disappointed that we have to make a new ordinance to take care of things that we used to be able to tell our neighbors, "Go away, or you're interrupting my sleep." It's just ridiculous how things have gotten now that we've taken away our authority from the police department to basically do what we want to do. And I guess I'm asking the council to consider the proposal that Becky has made, just from the standpoint, we would like our privacy and our sleep, just like anybody else does. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Redine. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Good evening. I'm Mike Ross. I live at 324 Willow Lane in Manassas, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity to address the council. I know you're going to be reviewing an ordinance proposal from Alderman Nichols with regard to the situation that Mr. Redine has spoken about. It has happened really within the last three to four years where we've had a significant number of lit boats. I mean, we're not just talking low-level lighting, we're talking thousands of watts of light coming into these small channels behind Willow Lane and Lake Road, and then the shoreline along the lake. These gentlemen are usually with armed or loaded crossbows, and they're fishing. And obviously, the DNR does permit that. What I think people don't realize is that many of my neighbors, myself included, at that time were working, and were trying to sleep. People are trying to raise their kids and whatever else, and it's very difficult to do that when you have five to 10,000 watts of light shining in your windows for not just a second or two, but for minutes on end. And then the way the boats would troll is they'd go up the channels and then back again. So, you weren't quite sure exactly when that would happen, and other boats would actually go out of the channels and then come back in again. So, throughout the night, we might have as many as five or six boats coming in the channel, going out, and then reversing and coming back. So, I really would like the council to consider the ordinance that Alderman Nichols is proposing, but I also understand that the DNR does control those waterways. I think that this is a slight fix that we can do to try to help the citizens, but I think more collaborative efforts probably going to be needed on the part of the city, Chief Steica and some of the other folks with regard to working with the DNR and the Wisconsin Association of Bow Fishermen, which we met with last year. Your Honor, I do have a written statement from Steve Figgy, also on Lake Road, that I would like to read. If you would permit me to do that, I would do that, or I can give it to the city clerk for distribution.
Sure, we'd be happy to hear from Mr. Figgy as well.
Okay. It says, "Good evening. I'm Steve Figgy. I've asked my neighbor, Michael Ross, to read this statement as public input regarding the preparation of an ordinance to limit after sunset bright lights and generator noise from bow fishermen. These fishermen have boats with multiple high wattage lights mounted at both the bows and sterns and both sides and are powered by noisy generators. The boats usually are occupied by three to five fishermen. They troll slowly past our homes within 50 to 100 feet. They travel up and down the Willow Lane and Lake Road channels from sunset to early morning, sometimes as early as 2 to 3 o'clock a.m. The bright lights shine into our first and second floor windows at random times. It's extremely irritating. My wife, Sue, and I have been residents for 42 years. I believe it was just three or four years ago that the DNR approved nighttime bow fishing with lights. The frequency of nighttime bow fishing, the intensity, the scope and range of the bright lights has increased threefold in the past few years. Therefore, the neighbors on Willow Lane and Lake Road channels and lakeshore residents on Lake Road have sought corrective action. Last year, Mike Ross and I participated in a collaborative meeting with Chief Steica, Alderman Nichols, and the state officers from the Wisconsin Bow Fishing Association, the local regional leader of the Wisconsin Bow Fishing Association, and the regional DNR director to share our concerns regarding bright lights and the noises from the generators. The Wisconsin Bow Fishing Association representatives shared their surprise, and I want to let you know that they were surprised when we showed them the videotapes. They had no idea what their colleagues were doing back in our channels at those times of the day or night, and how loud and obtrusive those lights were. They expressed that on their website and at their annual meetings, the regional workshops and tournament rules, that they would stress the importance of staying away from channels and shorelines wherever homes are nearby. The Wisconsin Bow Fishing Association stressed using common sense and steering clear of residential areas even to clarify no entry zones during competitions. In summary, my neighbors are fishermen too, but they all abide by common sense rules. Bow fishing is fine during daylight hours in Wisconsin waterways. It's okay during nighttime when... It's not okay during nighttime when multiple high-intensity lights are being used along with generators that upset the peace and quiet of the neighborhoods from the Winnebago shoreline to the very small channels in Manassas. If the DNR officials were in my living room from sunset to sunrise in June and July, they would immediately understand why nighttime bow fishing is so irritating to the Manassas residents and probably immediately create some common sense regulations. Thank you to Alderman Nichols, Chief Steica, and the Bow Fishing Association of Wisconsin, and our Manassas neighbors and the DNR for working collaboratively to find a common sense solution. Signed, Steve and Sue Figgy, 34 Lake Road, Manassas."
If we could just get that copy then, for the record, if that would be okay with you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Craig Zlowski, I live at 335 Lake Road. This affects me not on the canal side of my property, but also on the lakeside. I guess to sum up everything that folks have already said, this would be, in my opinion, the equivalent of me driving to your home in the middle of the night, sometimes midnight or 2:00 in the morning, turning on my high beams, directing them into your bathroom of your entire family, and then just circling around in circles numerous times, and laying on the horn and playing loud music, maybe drinking loudly as well, and discussing and partying in front of your house. The three main items that I have issues with, first and foremost, is safety. There's a boat full of people with weapons in killing distance of my property, and I have three little girls, and that is probably my number-one concern. Second, as already pointed out, noise. The generators are so loud that they wake me and my family up in the middle of the night. Third, lights that are often, probably feel like the equivalent of stadium floodlights that reflect off the water and go through my windows, and despite having blinds and curtains, it still lights up the bedroom. I've confronted, or I won't say confronted, I've spoken and asked reasonably for folks to not circle, and I'm usually ignored and sometimes even insulted. I've called the police numerous times to deal with it, and usually it results in we can't help you. People are often very loud and drinking. Like I said, they loop multiple times, and it hits me on both sides of my property. I pay very high taxes to live on the waterfront. I don't think that my family's quality of life should be sacrificed in our pursuit of happiness, and I hope that somebody will do something to rectify it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zlowski. Is there anyone else?
My name is Donna Rossi, and I live at 900 Key Street, and I thought I would just add a little female perspective. I agree with everything everyone has said. From my perspective, my husband travels a lot. It is really creepy to have a boatload of all men. I've never seen another woman out there with bright lights shining into your house at 2:00 a.m., and oftentimes they're yelling to be heard over the generator, there's cursing. It really gets very creepy to think that they can see all the way through your house at night, and it's loud. And we had house guests this summer. It was a beautiful time of year. Instead of being able to leave the windows open, we close our windows at night and turn on the air conditioning because it's so loud you can't sleep through the night. And it's really embarrassing to have to tell your house guests, "Well, we have this little problem. We can't leave the windows open." And I understand there's a lot of moving parts to this, and the DNR is involved, but hopefully the proposal can get approved, and the city as a whole can go to the DNR and say, "This is a real problem." And I also can't believe that these bright lights and loud noises don't affect the wildlife in the area. And I would think that the DNR would be especially interested in that because these lights are brighter than car headlights. It lights up my entire house when they are behind the house, almost brighter than when I have every single light bulb at my house on. So, it really is... Disturbing is a mild word for what we're doing, and it's... I've only lived here for two years. It's increasing, and it's lasting longer. At first, it was only the spring. Now, there are more boats, and it was all summer long last year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Jan Davey, and I live at 1232 Grove Street, and I've been a resident there for 30 years. And I just wanted to come before the council and almost, not this problem, but almost in the same vein, talking a little bit about our codes and some of the violations that I see and that I've been experiencing in our neighborhood. I have probably called Mayor Merks and the Code Enforcement Officer, Joe, every week, every Monday for the last, I don't know, since...
Month or so.
Yes. And we have issues in our neighborhood with, there's some rental properties there, and there are items left outside, mattresses, treadmills. Neighbors don't pull in their garbage cans. They'll sit for a week or two out at the curb, and the whole place is really deteriorating, and it's sad. I've lived there, like I said, 30 years, and our neighborhood looks a shambles. So, when I call our Code Enforcement Officer, who, and this is not to place blame on him, but he'll talk about the ordinances and that this resident was in violation for well until last year. And they don't show up for court, they don't, you know, they're summoned, and it's just a vicious cycle. And I didn't want to come before the council tonight without a solution. I thought, I've offered Mayor Merks, and I have no experience in this area at all, but I think we need to look at some of our codes and how we enforce. It's kind of like, almost the same. Hands are tied at the official level, and people just do not respond to, you know, my question was, why can't we, you know, say that this is a public nuisance and get in there with the garbage truck and pick some of this stuff up? But I'd be willing to help out in whatever way that I could, but I wanted to make the council aware because I think it's indicative of some of our neighborhoods with a higher incidence of our multi-unit housing, and we want to, you know, that comes right along with crime, and it really is pretty blighted over on my area of the woods. So, anyway, I would just wanted to make you aware and ask for your help with trying to clean up some of this. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Davey. Is there anyone else?
May I readdress again, please?
You've got five minutes total between...
And I didn't use up my five minutes. I'm almost sure. Larry Redine, when you address this issue that we've talked about tonight, I would like to get some feedback because I've read things, but seeing that people are here from the neighborhood, why the community police department has not been able to take care of this problem, you've got an hour to think about it, in the last few years with the noise ordinance that we have already? That's why, to me, common sense, why are these fishermen doing this? I'm a fisherman. I wouldn't do this, and especially to my neighbors. So, I'd like some answers why we can't do that, please.
Is there anyone else this evening? So, the way that this will work is the item that you guys all came for is on the Administration Committee agenda, and that committee meets directly following the Common Council, probably about a half an hour from now, I would guess, and then we'll kind of talk about the history and some other things, and hopefully be able to answer your questions at that point on that. So, we'll move on at this point to the Report of Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. We have the Minutes and Communications this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through H and Communications I and J.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Steica, Item J, the police department's new initiative, could you tell us and the public a little bit more about that?
This is something that we've been kind of working on a little bit under the radar for the last couple of months, and we're to the point now that we wanted to bring it out more publicly. What the initiative is, is we've assigned all of our patrol officers, along with a supervisor, two of them to each of the Aldermanic districts. For some of these issues that are possibly being raised here tonight, we want to get more of the boots on the ground, so to speak, to have more of a say into some of the community issues. Instead of just being, going to the call and taking care of it, there are some of these issues that are more long-term ones. Where we envision using this is, off the bat at least, for things like chronic nuisance problems. Historically, the way that that program would work, the officers would kind of sense that there was a problem with a particular residence, that would get forwarded on through a process, including the community liaison officer, who would then try to mediate it, and if we didn't get a solution, then we could start the chronic nuisance. What we're going to do is have, this is another step in that process, to try to get those officers involved to have more of a hands-on experience as to what's going on, to do a better job of solving some of these issues. So, what we put out there then, to you folks then, is we certainly encourage you then to contact those officers directly with some of the neighborhood issues that you may be seeing, so they can help try to also find solutions to it. This doesn't change the way that we're going to respond to calls. This doesn't change our staffing levels. We don't have that many officers. We tried to mix it around, so it would be a mix of days and evenings, or evenings and nights. Tried to put some of the night people in areas that they're taverns. So, it's kind of a work in progress, but we're sort of excited as to giving them a little more buy-in and a little more power to try to see problems through, with just not a call-to-call basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Taylor?
Attorney Steica, just, Attorney, I'm sorry. Chief Steica, I just wanted to thank you for being proactive with this. It kind of breaks the city down into smaller districts for your staff to manage, and I think that's a great idea. It kind of builds off the team concept type of thing. And Ms. Davies was here tonight, and I have the same frustration she has with our ordinances and, you know, and our officer, Paul Zine, that gets out there, our code enforcement. I know at times people maneuver around our ordinances, and I think it's an opportunity here to focus more on how to tighten up these ordinances, how to make our neighborhoods look better, and I know that's all of our focus up here. Somehow, I don't know, it's not being complete, it's not being done, and maybe with this opportunity here with two officers per district focusing just on that district, I think is a good idea, along with Officer Paul Zine, and maybe we can work on these issues to fruition to see that they're completed and make our city a much more enjoyable place to live, work, play, and we all win with this situation. And something Ms. Davies said too was, along with this deterioration, along with that comes crime, and it goes hand in hand. So, I'm confident, and I like this new initiative that was brought forth by you and your department. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, could we, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has six items. The minutes to approve from the Common Council meeting of February 20th, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 20th to approve the agreement with Keller Inc. for the general contracting services for the police department building addition not to exceed $45,600, and to authorize staff to proceed with the project. The Personnel Committee recommendations from February 20th to update the City of Manassas social media policy. The Plan Commission recommendations from February 21st for the certified survey map of 1116 Lake Park Road. The Nina Manassas Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from February 28th, hiring a firefighter after April 7th, based upon the known retirement of Nina Manassas Fire Rescue, will experience on June 24th to have the person trained prior to the retirement, and to reduce the overtime Nina Manassas Fire would experience if the department waited to fill the position until after the retirement. And PO Number 17-18 to purchase a SureTrak STW 6x12 trailer for a cost not to exceed $4,100, with the purchase to be primarily funded from the sale of public education van, and secondly, be funded through contribution from the annual mayor's charity golf outing. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
One and six.
Any others? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda Items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
There's a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Do we have a motion for Item 1, the Common Council minutes to approve? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I would like some changes to these minutes, and I would like to amend or hold these minutes till the next meeting.
So, the way that you would do that is someone would make a motion to approve, and then you'd make motions for each of the amendments? Or you could make a motion to table them, and we could have something included in the next packet that would offer those amendments for you at that point?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion in a second.
And I will provide amendments to Item H, Number 3.
So, what would you like the amendment to be?
In the minutes, it says, "Moved by Alderman Zalinski, second by Alderman Taylor to postpone action until the next council meeting." Those minutes should read, "Moved by Alderman Zalinski, second by Alderman Taylor to table action until the next council," or to table that action.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend them to...
To state that it was tabled and not postponed.
Okay. They were tabled, the motion was to table until the following meeting. So, do you want it just to say table?
Tabled, not postponed. The postpone was brought in after the fact of the table.
So, you just want to change the word postpone to table?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a motion. Does everyone see what he wants to change? There's a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor, could you turn your light off if there's discussion? Okay, no discussion. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Okay, did you have anything else?
And one other amendment. The third line down states, "Moved by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Zalinski, to amend to use the pillars from the old Elijah D. Smith Library in place of the four former First National Bank building columns." I would like, after the use of the five columns from the old Elijah Smith Library. It does state the number for the bank. I just wanted to be clear for the, and for, to represent the five branches of military service, is what it should read.
The clerk said that that wasn't part of the motion. If we could review the tape to see what exactly was said, if you want to table this till the next meeting then?
Sure. And, you know, we had a lengthy meeting on that.
Exactly.
I had a model up here representing all five pillars, which represented each of the branches of service. That model was, you know, we were working off that model.
I just wanted to make sure that we actually get a motion that was stated during the meeting, I guess, so.
Okay.
And the clerk had said that wasn't how she had written it down, and so we'd like to check that, and we can review that with you then.
Well, in the motion, it does say the four former First National Bank columns, and I know that we were talking about throughout the process, the five columns.
Sure. So, we'll take a look at that. We can review it with you even and go through there. So, what we need now is a motion to table or postpone to the next meeting, whichever you'd rather do.
I'll make a motion to postpone till the next meeting.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then we also have postponed Item 6, the purchase of the SureTrak trailer. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda Item Number 6.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank the fire chief for bringing this forward, that there was some safety concerns with the other vehicle we had. There was some employee injuries, and to avoid that and be proactive, I'm glad that this was brought to us, and also I appreciate the very creative fundraising efforts for this non-budgeted item, so we appreciate that too. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. On this trailer that we're getting, I'm a fan of getting rid of the vehicle and having a trailer instead, but where is this going to be stored? The trailer just outside, or do you have a location for it at the station?
Currently, although, Pub Ed van is hosed at Station 36, and once that leaves that facility, we can park the trailer inside as well. Yeah, same spot.
I guess this is a question for the mayor. Where does the money usually go for the annual mayor's charity golf outing?
This is the Mayor Cofford, mayor's charity golf outing. It goes to various places. I'm not sure where it's went in the past.
Typically, each year, Mayor Cofford will set aside two to three different charities, and so that's the reason we're bringing this forward. Now, it just kind of worked out where Mayor Cofford said he would be able to do that for one of his charities this year, so otherwise we would have used it as a budgeted item in future budgets, but stars aligned with that, and so, yeah, so the fire department will be the recipient of one of those charities. He'll probably still have one or two other charities that golf outing raises for.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Collier?
So, Mr. Mayor Cofford is generous...
So Mr. Co- Mayor Cofford is generous and grateful for you guys, and yet you're coming and saying, "I need four thousand dollars," but you had a, uh, vehicle last year that was not safe. You probably knew it was not safe, but you didn't want to enter it in your budget. Why was that?
Well, for this, for this particular trailer, they have been talking about it for the last few years. Why it wasn't budgeted earlier, I don't know. It was just brought forward to me, um, during the last couple of weeks, and the big reason was that our Public Education Committee, uh, met a few weeks ago to, uh, continue working on the programs that they do, and it was, um, brought forward at that time after the committee meeting. It was a recommendation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 23rd through March 2nd. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 23rd through March 2nd, 2017, in the amount of one million, two hundred ten thousand, three hundred, eleven dollars and ninety-one cents.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. We do have both approved and recommended for denial this evening. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated March 1st, 2017.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
We do have one license that was recommended for denial for Matthew Vandenbloomer. I think Matthew is here this evening. Um, would you like to address the council this evening? Or you may?
All right, thank you for having me, councilmen, women, and mayor. Um, my name is Matthew Vandenbloomer. I do live at 1 Ford, 1 Eighth, South Law Street in Appleton. Um, I've been a part of the community since 1988, um, outside of Gwendolfe, Milwaukee for college. Um, there are a couple of items listed on the denial that stem back to a couple felonies and, and wrongdoings back, dating back to, I mean, really, the felonies in '08. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I'm very sorry for those things that I've done in the past. Um, since then, you know, I went through, um, successful probation at the time, uh, went through, uh, kind of, uh, rehabilitation center successfully. Um, I was on probation, um, halfway through gaining a job as a server at Jonathan's Bistro back in 2010. Um, within a year, I was the general manager. I had successfully gone through probation. I was so happy to go back to my probation officer and give him that, that business card, you know. Um, I've been since in the community, um, helping open small businesses since, um, back to Houdini's Escape on Oneida Street, Draft Gastrapub on Oneida Street, um, the New Wilders on Scott or Northland Avenue, um, the old Mr. G's there. Uh, most recently, I'm with Wise Guys on Oneida Street, which makes me Manasha. Um, I do carry a valid operator license in Appleton, um, so I was hoping that I could just ask for kind of a second chance on this, um, to continue to do what I've been doing in the last, you know, eight, nine, 10 years. With that being said, I do want to say again that I am very apologetic about the things that I've committed in the past, but I'm a very, very changed man, and it feels, um, like a different lifetime, so.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions from the council? Alderman Collier?
I see that you have a license in Appleton, so that made me question the Manasha, and I know the police department does not love it when I get up here and speak like this, but a lot of times, people have felonies or other misdemeanor problems, and they want to go on in their life, and this is like a second chance program, bartending and getting out there, and they can say, "I don't know what you did. I don't want to know what you did in the past," but you're trying to go forward, and, and I got a lot of leniency on this, and because you got a license in Appleton, and I don't think they're no worse than us or Nina or anybody else, I think you should get a second chance, and I hope some of the people in the council agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Chief, did you care to make any comments, or nothing right now? Alderman Proctor?
Uh, you said you participated in a rehabilitation program. What year was that? Do you know?
Oh, boy, probably 2009, um, and then I was on probation probably from '06 until right around becoming the manager at Jonathan's. That would have been around, uh, 2010, uh, when I was successful with that. And then I went into the halfway house at Mooreing, um, so I was at Nova and then Mooreing in Appleton and, um, successfully completed that program as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Chief, was the application, uh, honestly filled out, or was there any errors?
Yes, it was.
And, uh, Mr. Vandenbloomer, um, you do know that you can bartend with another bartender in the city of Manasha without a license?
I do.
If it is denied here tonight?
I, I do. Um, I was hoping that it wouldn't be. I, um, have been a manager at all of the places I listed, and I do stay late. Um, hopefully, um, I would be able to alleviate some of the time that the owners are there, Mike and Brenda. Um, they usually stay in top bar clothes, and I'd like to be the guy that is able to do that if needed.
And in here, it says, uh, these occurred before you were 19 years old, and now you're 28 years old?
That is correct.
And there hasn't been anything from your 19th birthday till?
Um, there was an instance that is listed on here. Um, there was, a few years ago, a possession of drug paraphernalia. Um, that was part of a case. Um, long story short, I had a couple of charges against the House. Um, they brought charges on each member of the House, and I put, um, no contest to that to get everything else read in, or not read in, dismissed, rather.
Uh, thank you for your honesty on the application. A lot of people don't do that.
Absolutely, thank you.
So at this point, I would entertain either a motion for approval or denial. Or more comments if you...
Uh, I just had a question about 2014. I was looking at this, and I was convinced you're fine until I read the 2014 one, and could you explain that again? It's like, you had a roommate or something?
Um, very specifically, I guess.
Not, not too specific.
Oh, I know, I know, quickly. Um, we had three roommates in the house, one of which being my best friend now. Um, he had since moved out. Um, they swapped. Um, the gentleman that moved into the house, um, apparently was being, uh, watched as prior residence. He was there for a month before this happened. Um, he had taken everything, because everything was his that they found or whatever in a raid that they did. So there was paraphernalias, there was, um, I can't remember how much, and marijuana, and, and, um, selling devices for his sake. Um, he did take, I don't know why I had to plead guilty. We were just like spending money up the yazu for an attorney. Um, any which way, he did, he did put that all on his shoulders, um, nobly, because it was all his. So, when this was going through, we were about four months into it, and I had an attorney, and we were paying out of pocket, and, and he's just like, "Listen, we can go through this, or you can just get, get out of this with a misdemeanor, or you're going to be spending more money to obtain his services." So I said, "Well, um, I guess I'll bite the bullet on that," so.
So that was a misdemeanor charge then?
Yes.
And of the
Because what had happened?
material that they, that they charged you with wasn't in your space, you know? Usually when you have roommates, you have your own room.
It was all in a general space, yeah, and so, uh, all the charges that he got, um, he also, uh, through the courts, um, myself and the other roommate who has a squeaky queen, uh, you know, record, uh, he also got charged those, and he was able to, um, find, uh, find money for an attorney, um, more than I could at the time. Um, that's not the excuse, uh, by no means, you know, um, my innocence and everything.
Yeah, I don't look for excuses. I look for reasons, and that's it, you know, but...
So that, that's what happened at that point, yeah.
Chief, was there anything in there to corroborate that at all, or?
It wasn't one of our cases, but it certainly sounds plausible.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I hope you understand why the city takes this position serious. Uh, uh, we're looking for character, uh, we're looking for someone that can be responsible, instead of sending someone out the door, uh, that could possibly kill other people on the road. Uh, so the city takes us, uh, very serious, and, uh, I remember a, a talk I got from, many years ago, from Chief Wallerman. My college days, I was bartending over in Nina, and, uh, he had to go to his office and see him, and, uh, it was a good talk I got at 19 years old, and telling about the responsibility and what he expected for his city at that time, and, and, you know, this is what our city, uh, expects, and that's why we have a, a six-page ordinance on this, and, uh, I don't know what Appleton's ordinance is, but I just wanted you to know that, uh, we, we take this very serious, uh, especially of what, uh, can happen to the people in the public with someone that's irresponsible at this position, so.
Can I respond to that? Um, I do feel like a positive, um, for the city as well as feeling like a positive for Appleton, um, being a general manager for five different restaurants, and, and, um, you know, I, I had started, started writing things. I just wanted to come to you from my, my heart, I guess, ad lib, um, but I feel very positive in forming even younger, um, students in, in work ethic and workforce development, um, you know, hiring younger students to dishwash and host and lead them and lead by example, sometimes via my past, you know, so, um, I do appreciate that.
So everyone is going to jump right on here, huh? So I would accept a motion to either approve or deny at this point? Alderman Collier?
I'd like to make a motion to let this gentleman apply for a license in Manasha and go to work. Thank you.
So that's a motion to approve?
To approve.
Okay. Is there a second? There's, okay. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call six, one.
Thank you. So the chief can help you out with what the next steps are, then? Thanks.
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Um, item three is a motion to reconsider the approval to exercise action on a trail easement. Um, this is, um, a motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds vote. It does not require a second, and it is non-debatable. Is there a motion at this time? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to reconsider the approval and to exercise action on the trail easement along a rare yard of 99, 95 Broad Street connecting the Trestle Trail, Broad Street to Water Street.
Like I said, it does not require a second. Um, what happens after the vote, the vote would, if the vote is affirmative, the motion would be back on the table as it was at the last meeting, and we would basically start the process over. If it's denied, then the vote at the last meeting would stand. Um, it's not debatable at this point. If you have a question about the process, okay. So if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call two, five.
Okay, so then the motion stands from the last meeting at this point. Item J is heldover business. It's the master license agreement between the city of Manasha and Wisconsin Technology Networking. Is there a motion? Doesn't work? Okay, try again. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the master license agreement between the city of Manasha and Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC for the use of public right-of-way.
There's a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
I'm looking at the memo from Attorney Captain dated February 27th, um, and about halfway down the page, she lists some questions for us to review in regards to our discussion at the last meeting, and also outlines what would be required, um, of us if we sho- if we so choose to take action. So I'm wondering how we can review that.
I'm not sure if I'm looking at the same memo as you are.
Or get an update.
Is this the memo that you're looking at?
No.
That's why I can't find it, because there's
There's two memos.
Two memos, but, there we go.
To get in, to have an update provided on, um...
So you're looking for the questions to the common council?
Yes.
Do we prefer the shorter or taller poles? It says, "No actions required unless the council disagrees." So basically, if we do not make an amendment, then that's, that we're preferring the higher poles? Is that what you're asking?
Correct.
And item two is, do we want to work with them to address installations within the right-of-way on city poles? And if so... And item two is the, the master agreement that we're approving tonight, correct? Oh, this is, okay. This is about pole attachments to Manasha Utilities poles.
Correct.
So, and, uh, we could, we could do that as well if you would like to make an amendment to direct staff to do that.
Are you, I'll offer that amendment to Alderman Benner's motion to include in that license agreement with Mobile Lite that we work out, um, terms and conditions acceptable to Manasha Utilities as well.
Okay. So that's, there's a motion to add that. Is there a second? There's a motion in a second to add that?
Could you read the motion back?
Clerk Ali Aziz, would you like to?
The original motion was to approve the master lease agreement between the city of Manasha and Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC for the use of public right-of-way and to include, um, upon the terms and conditions acceptable to Manasha Utilities.
Alderman, a few of us solemn and asked questions, um, just for the people at home. I want to review this, um...
Okay, right now, we're just, we're just talking about the amendment, though, right now, that we would request staff to enter into a license agreement with terms and conditions acceptable to Manasha Utilities regarding, um, pole attachments.
Okay, so what?
So we, we would need to...
What document are you looking at?
So if you're looking at the memo from February 27th?
From the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you look at number two at the bottom, um, one of the things that they want, that they are planning on doing is attaching some of these to current Manasha Utilities power poles as well, and this amendment would request that we have staff create a licensing agreement for pole attachments to Manasha Utilities poles and include it with this agreement. I think that's something that...
So all this is saying is that if we, if, um, this company wants to attach, uh, these dishes or whatever technology they have to our existing poles, the utility will okay that, or will it come back to the council?
Well, Manasha Utilities technically has the authority to allow that.
Okay.
Pole attach- Uh, pole attachments, they negotiate pole attachments all the time with cable companies and things like that. So what we're doing is asking them to create a pole attachment policy to attach to this policy that is on the council agenda tonight.
Okay. And then, uh, I have the concerns that the Alderman had and we could take care of that.
And after we say yes or no to that-
After the amendment, good.
Then we can go on to what
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. That's where you need to turn your light off so I can see if anyone else wanted to talk about the amendment. Okay, so seeing no further discussion on the amendment, could we have a roll call vote on just the amendment?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Okay, Alderman Taylor, now if you want to go on to the other items, we can do that.
Well, certainly there was seven, eight, nine questions generated by the council last meeting and, um, not speaking for Alderman Spencer, who's not here this evening, but, uh, he had three and four, and I don't think his questions were answered. And, um, also, I'm not in favor of where these poles are. Uh, for the people at home, these are a, kind of a single, uh, communication pole. It's, it's for, they're starting to ramp up technology for, uh, autonomous cars and, uh, and, and the wireless system for that. And, uh, these poles are five feet in diameter, 120 feet tall, and, uh, that's a really tall pole. And, um, um, I had some safety concerns about that and the placement of them, I certainly do. And I think we can adjust that with no problem here, uh, to get it out of the, the, possibly for a vehicle crash into them. And, um, um, also I had asked for a safety device, a bollard or something to be placed in front of them. And if we move a couple of these, we won't have to do that, but, um, I would certainly like to see, see that done. And, um, the question that Alderman Spencer asked you here twice, it was never answered. Right now they're looking at these three, uh, poles in our city and how many more can we expect? And, uh, the only answer they're giving here is that, um, currently this is all that's proposed. Well, I'm sure if they're building this network to, for autonomous cars and other technology, um, they must have a, um, a plan on what their coverage is. And, you know, when we start putting these poles in newer subdivisions and it's 120 feet tall, uh, I, I think you're going to have, um, some outspoken citizens here. So, uh, I, I think those questions need to be answered. And this was brought to the attorney back in August and it got to us, uh, last meeting. So certainly I think we have a little time here to get the answers we need for the public. Make sure it's, uh, uh, the safety is taken care of for the public. And, um, I would like to, uh, table this, uh, at this time until we redirect the attorney to get some answers, uh, that were requested in, in these nine, uh, questions from the last meeting.
So the motion is just to table this at this point?
Yeah. You know, the City of Nina is sitting on this too right now. We were told last meeting that, uh, they're not taking action on this right now. And I don't know for what reason, but, uh, uh, there's, there's no reason we can't, uh, for our public safety and for the aesthetics of the city that, uh, we can't, uh, go back and look at this and get these answers.
So I, I was just clarifying that it wasn't to a time certain or anything like that. We'll just table it and we'll work with you as to when you want to see it come back.
I would like to get these answers.
Exactly. There's a motion and a second to table. I always forget if table is debatable or not.
Table is not.
Okay. The motion is non-debatable. Could we have a roll call vote, please? So Alderman Keyhan's button isn't working.
Motion carried on roll call five two.
We will, um, you'll be happy to know I have a purchase order on my desk for a new microphone and voting system in the new building for the summer, so. We'll have, we'll have Brian take a look at it as well, but... Item L is appointments. We have three reappointments this evening. The first is the reappointment of Chris Everson to the Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Chris Everson.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second for the reappointment of Chris Everson to the Board of Appeals for the term of February 1st through, 2017 through February 1st, 2020. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we could take the two for the landmarks together or separately at your pleasure. Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, we'll take them together. Make a motion to approve the reappointment of Emily Steinman to the Landmarks Commission for the term of 3/1 2017 to 3/1 2020, and the reappointment of Kim Massey to Landmarks Commission for the term of 3/1 2017 to 3/1 2020.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment and any matter that was on the agenda this evening, if anyone would like to speak. And again, we'll be going back to the bullfishing at the next meeting. Seeing, oops.
I, um, Kathy Stahl, 225 Railroad Street. Um, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on, um, the bullfishing ordinance that is going to be discussed this evening. Is there still another layer of approval after that ordinance is passed by the city, um, that's required from the DNR? And then, um, when that is approved, who is responsible for enforcing that? Is that the DNR or the police department or how, how does that work?
We'll talk about those at the next meeting. Okay. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.